Meeting of the library board of trustees. Call it to order and we'll do a roll call.
Beth Sanabi.
Richard Rayman, Richard Bessary.
Dorothy Wood.
And Dr. Minehan. See, I got it right this time. Okay, we had minutes from the previous meeting. And if there's...
Motion to approve.
Second?
Approve.
Okay, minutes on our table, everybody approves. Okay. So the purpose for today's meeting is basically to discuss the job description for the director's position. We are going to do an open search. We just want to bring the current job description up to date. Which Dick has taken it and edited the old one and brought it up to date and has provided us with a new copy of the revised, which is really minor tweaks to the old one. So there really is no substantive changes to it at all.
Correct. The duties haven't changed.
Yeah. So I think basically the purpose of this meeting is to check this out, make any comments on it, approve it as edited, or if it is edited, and go forward with it and get it to the town. In my understanding, since it's just minor tweaks, it does not have to go to the Human Relations Board, or the Personnel Board, whatever it's called. And we can start the process of going forward. I have actually requested a meeting with Tracy, since she is the Personnel Director, to kind of give us some guidance and tell us what we need to do for the next steps. Because my experience, we haven't really gone out and done this in the past. It's been kind of... well, I guess we did do it internally, so... Yeah, so sure, I'm sure she'll provide us with whatever we need to do. And I know internally, we can access all of the professional websites that are out there that we can post this on going forward, so... That's kind of where it's at. So if there's any comments on the job description that we can change, modify if need be, or just go as is.
Erin had two, I think she had sent to you yesterday. Just, I don't know if I have the most up to you.
I never got anything from you guys.
She emailed, just about making the collection development section more on the second page, just making it more general. So it's not specific to a particular collection, but just something along the lines of may purchase for different library collections. So that, because like, this isn't accurate, because that's not, other people do these collections right now, so...
Well, that was my question on it. Is it more like supervisors' purchase of...
Um, I would maybe leave it open so they could do a collection if they want, depending on, you know, if other people leave here, they might need to take on a collection.
My feeling is that if you supervise it and you name yourself, that's part of your supervisory capability. So it really gets covered, nothing to change.
Just make it more general, so it's just not specific.
But the question is, doesn't, isn't it just part of a... Shouldn't it just be a regular bullet point?
I think it could be a regular bullet point. I don't think it has to be separate. If you want to put it under duties and responsibilities, that should be fine.
Yeah, it seems to me that it doesn't mean it's on... It doesn't mean it's on heading.
No, it's part of your duties and responsibilities. So, take the collection development heading out and just slide up.
And put supervisors' purchase.
Of all materials in the library's collections. And just leave it at that.
Yeah. So the various collections are just libraries' collections.
Yeah, just make it general. Oh, I have an extra. Or do you have that one?
Okay, was there another change?
Oh, she had said something else, let me...
Because I never got any response.
Oh, really? Because we, I think we both emailed yesterday.
Maybe you're in my spam folder.
Oh, maybe. Let me boom my settings.
You say supervisors' purchases.
Sorry.
I did have one other question I think you could answer perfectly.
Okay. I did, I didn't search. Just going to look for her other one, what she said.
No, I never got anything.
Oh, here we go. I can't find it now. Found one email from me, but I don't see that she sent anything back.
I didn't see anything from her.
Oh, that's weird. Maybe she just emailed me by mistake.
Yeah, well, that happens, yeah.
Well, I don't, I think it was minor.
Well, the other, I had that other question. Performs by annual staff evaluations. Is it really just an annual staff evaluation? I know she doesn't, but...
She, I think her goal was annual, to do annual staff evaluations, not biannual. Yeah, but, I mean...
And to your point though, Dick, is this, if we leave it as biannual, do they have to do a biannual then? Was that from Boxford, or was that from us, the biannual?
It was everything, everything below, the first couple of bullets, some of which I moved from our old previous version. And I think one other thing that I put in from Boxford, everything else is identical.
Okay.
The summary, the summary is...
It was probably in the old one.
In Newgerd? Okay.
So the question is, does, are you concerned that changing it from biannual to annual will create an obligation or requirement that the Personnel Board get, and there will be changes? Something fundamental in your view that makes it problematic?
Um, this is just, to me, this is a statement that you're going to be doing biannual staff evaluations, which is probably a good thing, if they want to do that. That's fine. I just don't want someone thinking if they don't do that, then...
Fine.
But, why don't we leave it as biannual?
In my experience, it's never been.
Okay. All right.
Hi. I would think it hasn't been.
I know she's done it at least once.
Oh, no, actually.
Yeah. So, and that's typical for most places, it's usually like this? But if she does development, she might individually speak with you about development too. I don't know. So whoever is doing this...
She does interact, obviously, you would expect that the director is going to be interacting with the staff on an ongoing basis, so...
So you could just leave it. I mean, it's better than having less.
Absolutely, absolutely.
It was just a question, I wasn't sure.
Yeah, I think what it does, it kind of emphasizes the need for the director to be engaged with the staff. It isn't...
Give feedback and all that, and development.
Yeah.
So, anything else? Then I will literally accept the job description as amended.
And the second?
Great, so be it. So I'll generate that tomorrow. Okay. And send it out to everybody. Call it the final. And you'll be able to...
I'll get it to Diane.
Yeah.
Like I said, I've requested a meeting with Tracy for Monday or Tuesday of next week, depending on her schedule, so that we can figure out what it is we have to do next in order to move forward. I think one of the other things we probably should do, I don't know if we want to do it now or not, is create the search committee.
I think we should discuss it. I think there are two things I thought we could talk as additional business. One is the search committee, and the other was the interim... Do we even want to formalize an interim hire on the assumption that we are unlikely to find and hire a candidate before...
January 26th?
January 26th. With the holidays and everything. Anyways, I just thought it was worth discussing.
I don't, I don't think it's a bad thing to say, this is our backup. Because, you know, I don't know how quickly it goes through when hiring somebody. So by January 26th, it doesn't matter if we have somebody in mind. If it's, the whole process takes longer than that, we need an intro.
Yeah, because...
Right?
There are many a slip twixt the cup and the lip. No, no, there have been done deals that suddenly got down to brass tacks and negotiation, and the deal fell away. You have to be prepared for that.
So I think it's a good thing to come up with an intro.
Okay.
And then, and you don't use the intro if you're able to get the person in, right? Before the 26th.
And then there was, you wanted to talk about, was the other thing you wanted to talk about?
Um, in terms of hiring. I have a couple of questions in regards to, a couple of things that you guys would need to discuss in terms of... Okay. So we have the job description. Erin said, just mentioned she would forward the job posting, like the shorter version that goes on everything. But she's not sure if you guys would need to officially vote on a job posting, because it's more of an informal...
I'm going to revise it.
Okay.
And... I don't know, I can't remember if we voted on it or not. I mean, we discussed, for discussion is, I'm going to be revising the job posting, which is the boiled down version that goes on the various...
Various, right, right.
And the question is whether that needs to be voted...
I don't think we did the last time.
No, so let's assume that it's a, that it's not a formal document, as formal a document as this.
Yeah, just something to put on.
It's not going to change, it's not going to put anything in it that isn't...
It isn't in the joint, right.
And it's probably not going to change that much from before, right? It may or may not.
I don't know, I haven't seen it.
You can imagine.
Erin thinks that it needs an update, so we'll see what that is.
Okay. And then another question is, where are the resumes are getting filtered? Like email address, or, that was another question. I'm just trying to get you guys, so that if we want to post it next week, you know, you have everything in place to think about. Because that would need to go on the job posting as well.
Well, I'm sure, I'm sure if we wanted to, we could create a library-connected email of a search or something.
Erin had also mentioned we have an admin email, so that's me and Erin share. And we could have it set up to forward to you guys or just a adversary, whoever is on the search committee probably, actually. So we were thinking, if you want, we can use that admin address and if we ask applicants to specifically put in the subject heading, Library Director Application, so the forwarding will see that and just shoot it right off to you guys.
That's fine, I don't know. Again, this is, good to put all of this in place. We're going to get the direction from Tracy as to how, what the process is.
Right, yes, right.
Assuming we're going to be in the forefront, I don't think it'll go through her Town Hall.
I just want to have you guys have options.
Yeah, yeah, no, it's good.
So, something else?
So, you look like a star when you talk to her. Say, okay, we need this, we need this, we need that. And then...
And she told you, yeah.
Two other questions. If you want to put a, what, how you want to put like a deadline? If there's a deadline to apply, preference will be given to candidates who applied before, or applications will be accepted on a rolling basis until a position is filled. There's kind of those three standard ones I find in most job postings that discuss...
My bet is the town has a way of doing this.
Yeah, I mean, that's, yeah, that's...
That we should...
Just something to ask Tracy.
Yeah.
Okay. And then Erin wanted to just know what the salary would be, because she's working on her budget request for next year. And so she was wondering what that would look like, so she can incorporate that in.
It's going to be a range, depending on experience.
The maximum for this particular grade is 78. So it's going to be somewhere, I wouldn't put 78 in there, because we don't have that money in the budget, so...
Right.
So it would be 70 plus, plus or minus, I would think.
Yeah, I don't know. Again, I don't know how they do ranges, you know?
Yeah, you know, I got this one...
It's really up to the town to decide.
The town to decide this, because it's going to have to be town budget. You know, if they're going to budget us, the money, the maximum that this pay, this pay grade allows is 78, 187. You know? So, what's in our budget that we can do that? So that's part of the conversation I want to have with her.
Yeah, and Tracy usually knows what she's putting in there.
Yeah, she knows.
So she's really the person that's...
She is the Personnel Director.
When does this ever increase?
The salary? The salary. It'll be here, isn't it?
Yeah, usually it's, whatever the increase for the town is, if it's a 2% or 3%, I think we went a little bit above that for Erin when we renewed her contract. And we were, we could do that. But it wasn't really substantial, you know, by any means.
I think we just rounded it up.
I think we did, yeah. So, it's, it is usually there. The salary increase is based on usually the percentage increase across the board for the town employees. That's the way it has been.
The town is not set up for merit raises?
No, no.
It's funny, it's in the personnel policy, but they don't do it. You know, they just don't.
It's like, you know, when I had my big time business job, you know, and I got X number of vacation days, but tried to take them.
Oh, wow. All right. Those were all the questions.
Thank you.
Things to think about.
So, quite some years ago, my previous term on the board, when we had a search, we had, we had two trustees and we had somebody from the Personnel Board. And I can't remember if we had somebody else, but I think we should discuss who the stakeholders are and whether we want to expand the search beyond simply two trustees. Which I believe is what happened the last time.
Was it just two trustees?
There was Terry and Alex.
Right. So I just think it's worthy of a conversation.
I do too. I do too. That it's worthy of a conversation, it should be a third person. I mean, it would be hard for me to say that that's the maximum salary if there was a wonderful candidate, with lots of experience.
But that's not really our decision, is it? I mean, it's really, if it's a person you want, you then say to the town, this is who we want, what is it? You know, there's a process that you go through that. That's not something in the selection process you really decide. Because in the job description, it's going to give a range, right?
Right, yeah.
Right, so they'll know what the salary is. But, is there another, you guys did it. Was there another reason why you think somebody else would be nice to somebody else? A third person in there? Tiebreaker, or something like that?
I just think it would be good to integrate a little more with other people in town government.
Okay, look who.
Maybe somebody out of the town corps office, although that's a small group.
That's just too...
Yeah.
I don't know who the Personnel Board is beyond the director, but it seems to me that that's a place to look for a participant, since that's part of their game.
To integrate people together a little more.
Yeah. I get what you're saying. I'm wondering though, if it's better to do, you have the trustees come up with maybe a final pick. If there's, not one person, but maybe if there's two, say, okay, have the Personnel... I mean, we want to get through this quickly, right? And I get what you're saying. But I'm just wondering, we're really the ones that, I believe, we're really the ones that have to make the decision. I think it's wonderful to have somebody else who knows human resources and whatever to come in, but I'm not sure if that'll slow the process down, or, you know, I don't know.
Well, it's not likely to speed it up. The question, the question is whether it'll slow it...
Down substantially.
Substantially, or just... In order to have a three-way conversation instead of a two-way conversation.
Personally, I don't have a problem with the two. I mean, I see it, that the two trustees, whoever they are, would be able to evaluate and assess the candidates based on their professional experience, based on their interaction with the library over the years.
And that, that's my other concern. If you're bringing someone in from a different department who really has had the experience... I get what you're saying, you want integration. That's, I think that's a great idea. I just don't think they have the background to make the decisions.
You may be right. I mean, that's, you know, and I think the... We do have, I mean, and you can say no, but I'm saying we have a trustee who has personnel experience, right? So if you were willing to be on the search committee, we would have that in a trustee.
Yeah, if you get it done before the 26th, sure. No, I have no problem with getting on the search committee.
So could we say that the two of you would be the search committee?
I may need a backup. There's a lot of stuff going on in my personal work that I'm not entirely in control of.
Right, right.
So I'm willing to begin.
I can do it. It's going to be difficult driving, though.
Yeah, I know. But I have, I still don't have my license. But I have a meeting with the Water Vehicle Bureau telephone on Monday, and hopefully they're going to say, yes, you can come here.
And you could always ask Patty too, if she was, you know, interested.
I mean, I think if, there should be backup. It's no problem to have more than just two people doing it too. So, and I didn't know if, I'm just putting it out there, and you do not have to accept it if you'd want to have me just sit in the background on any interviews, at any point during the process. I'm willing to just be a little person in the corner and just listen to the responses if you want. But, I'm just throwing that out there.
And I wonder if Erin would be a good person to do that to?
If, you might be, yeah.
Right, if she says she has a job, if she could do it.
If not, I think we're okay.
Okay. She did say that, Erin said just a little while ago to me that, you know, she's, you know, and you, you know, in conversation with her, have developed a really better view of what's important and what's a weak point.
Right.
Probably than what they really had before, so...
So I think that, you know, someone who's in the position or around the position, having them as a third person, just... And I don't have to ask any questions or anything, but I can at least just kind of be there. As if we have questions about, if the candidate asks us, what would this entail, whatever, you know, then we could say, all right, expert, what exactly are we talking about when we say that?
Yeah, and when they respond, you have a better sense of what their response is in terms of the professional aspect of it.
Do you recall, Terry, how many interviews you guys did last time?
We only had one candidate, so it's true.
We really only had one candidate. I know we talked to some people else too. There was one other person. But they didn't officially do that.
Okay, how many do you typically do? You have an initial interview and then either subsequent, or was it just an initial interview?
It was.
It was just...
Yeah, that was...
Shortest we knew, yeah.
There's no sense in dragging things out?
No, definitely not, definitely not, so... So the key would be, and when I talk with her next week, to see, you know, what the timeline is about getting this advertised. And, you know, a blessing from the town that it's, excuse me, in the proper form in order to go forward. So, and then we'll do it.
And you don't have to answer, but is this a job that you intend to apply for?
No, not this time.
Fine. I didn't know that.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Okay, yeah, sorry. Who knows?
That's why we're...
No, that's fine, but I wanted to make sure.
Yeah, that's why we're going to an open search. And not doing a, starting with the in-house posting.
Okay.
I'm sorry.
That speeds it up.
Yes, I did.
I left my psychic powers at work.
No, that's okay.
Mine were right there with yours. That's all right, you know, that's, but that's, it is what it is.
Yeah, absolutely.
Would not have sense if I was only...
Yes, I was like, that's why I was talking like, I don't know. I see where hesitation was now. Some new knowledge or anything, it was like, sorry.
I'm sorry, I should have said something.
You got to do what you got to do.
And what about interim? Is that something you'd be...
I mean, I can until I'm out on maternity leave. That's where it could get a little tricky, depending on where your hiring time is.
Well, we better, we better be done by...
Get somebody in here before that. I mean, I'm totally fine with running things until we get a director in place. I've been working closely with Erin on invoices, budgeting, and stuff like that.
Important.
Stuff like that. Hopefully she's getting, she'll have the budget letter and the big stuff done. And the next person can come in and continue on with like the air support and all the other stuff, so...
You are not to take any papers to the delivery room.
No, but you'll be in a position to train if, on the assumption that Erin might be gone before we hire.
Right.
You'll be able to train in the new person fairly effectively.
That would be the best possible scenario in there.
Exactly, exactly. So that they at least have a month or so.
So it's not just, here you are, good luck.
Because there's just a whole list of tiny little details that would be great to pass along before I'm not here.
Right.
Well, yeah, she did extensive looking into different things. What this cost, what was this cost for, what was that? So, that'd be invaluable to someone coming out, I think.
So, are you going to be on the search committee, or am I?
I thought you were.
Well, I'll do a backup.
I'll be...
She'll be a backup.
We'll start on that, we'll just see what goes on. I wish my life were different, but it is...
I can be a backup, for sure.
Yeah, let's see how this progresses going forward by the time we advertise and things start coming in. Your needs may be very, may be more clear, and we say, okay.
I wish. It's a weekly, daily process of knowing where the fire is.
I have a question, because I think you'll be able to answer this too. How's the rest of the staff feeling, anywhere?
I think pretty good, overall. Erin, you know, told them a couple weeks ago now. You know, and they had, there's a little discussion and back and forth. So I think, you know, and we have a staff meeting coming up, so hopefully we can go over more of like, you know, what it will look like when she's gone and stuff. And I can give them a little update too, on like where we are in the hiring process in a couple weeks, so...
Good.
It's a process.
So do we need to vote on the search committee?
Yeah, there's a motion to appoint Dick and Beth as the search committee, and Terry as a backup. Motion?
Oh, all right.
Yeah, second?
I vote for myself.
Yeah, exactly, that's okay.
That's all right. Do you need another meeting day?
Yeah, we need a December meeting anyway.
Just a regular one?
A regular one, so we'll meet at a Tuesday in December. Go back to 4:00 o'clock.
The third Tuesday is the 19th.
Is it 12?
Oh, no, yeah, right. Third Tuesday, yeah.
November's stolen.
So, 19th at 4?
19th at 4.
Melissa is thinking of trying to become more involved with the library. My neighbor, who was on the board for years, and is the one that got me to...
Okay.
And she said she wanted to get back into doing more at the library, so I'm bringing her name up here.
Okay, and, okay.
Well, that's good.
Yeah, she's a sharp...
Yeah, absolutely.
Yeah, and a very motivated person.
Yeah, that would be terrific.
That'd be excellent.
So, the 19th, 19th at 4 o'clock, that works for me.
I'll let Erin know so she can create an agenda.
Create the agenda for it, okay.
Does it, that was the other question I had. Is it say agendas when it was listing stuff to do? Sorry, we already voted no. I guess it's under the touch, she was seeing that. Okay. Okay.
Alright, is there a motion to adjourn?
Yes.
Okay, second?
Second.